Good morning or good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming to this session. We're all really excited about it and the group that we brought together. I'm Christine Ambersoni from Roswell Park Comprehensive Cancer Center. And this session is based on information, questions that are relevant to the daily lives of people with cancer, for researchers, for docs, and for patient advocates. And so we brought together people who can talk about benefits, maybe the cons, of a number of modifiable factors, and also questions important to sexual health after cancer. So our speakers today are Heather Greenley from Fred Hutch Cancer Center, and Don Dezon from Brown University, Ricky Caniato from Roswell Park, and Larry Cushy from Kaiser Permanente Northern California. And Tamika Bryant is going to give us the patients' perspective or the advocates' perspective towards the end. We're hoping to have time for a couple of questions after each speaker, if there's something that's really pressing. But we're really hoping to have enough time at the end to have a good period of time to have a panel, so a lot of discussion. They're going to put up a QR code for questions, and if you scan that, and everybody please scan that, and then you can write your questions right in. They'll come up on the screen, I'll see them, and we can kind of coordinate and address them to the right person. So that may be a really efficient way to ask questions that you have that come up during a talk, that you might not want to have to hold until the end. So I'm going to stop at this point and introduce Heather Greenley, please.
My name's Heather Greenley. I am a cancer epidemiologist at the Fred Hutchinson Cancer Center. I'm also the medical director for our integrative medicine program there. I'm trained as a naturopathic physician. So I do have two financial disclosures that I think that's important to talk about. One, as I said, I am employed by the Fred Hutchinson Cancer Center, and I talk to patients every day in clinic about dietary supplement use and cannabis. And so this is part of my job. I'm also receiving NCI research support to do research in this area as well. So why are we talking about this, dietary supplements and cannabis? So we know that many, if not most, breast cancer survivors seek a holistic, whole-person approach to their cancer care that goes beyond treating their disease. And within this, there's very high interest in and use of dietary supplements. Additionally, there's increasing use of cannabis. As you can see by the photo on the right, there are many, many claims in this area, often unfounded, and we have very limited data to make our clinical decisions, both for patients and for providers. But it's really important because survivors need to know the options for effectively meeting their health goals. And in terms of dietary supplements and cannabis, they need to know, do dietary supplements or can dietary supplements and cannabis meet their health goals? And if not, what are their other options? And so this is what we talk to our patients about, and this is what a focus of our research is on. So currently, depending on which paper you're looking at and what population has been surveyed, somewhere between 50 and 85% of breast cancer survivors are using dietary supplements after diagnosis. What we really want to know, is it safe and does it work? However, there are many challenges that we have right now. Number one, dietary supplements are not regulated by the FDA as drugs, but rather they're regulated as food. There are many inconsistent and misleading health claims. We have very low rates of disclosure to healthcare providers, and that's often due to the patient's reason. The clinical visits aren't structured to spend time asking patients systematically about their dietary supplement use. There are a number of possible interactions and harm, and patients and clinicians both really struggle with decision-making in this area. And oftentimes, we actually see that it's a source of conflict between patients, their families, their loved ones. Oftentimes, if any of you know a breast cancer survivor, which I assume everybody in this room does, they'll talk to you about or talk to us about their patient, their family are sending them information of dietary supplements or products that they should try, their friends are, they're seeing things online, and there's just a lot of confusion. So we're hoping today to dispel some myths and to give a clear path forward. So the good news is, we have really good data on vitamin D now, and so this is something that we're starting to routinely recommend in our practice. So vitamin D comes from a number of sources, number one, from the sun, but those of us who spend a lot of time in front of our computers these days don't get as much sun exposure as previously, plus there's a risk of skin cancer. But there are quite a few dietary sources as well, which are in the picture here. There are multiple benefits to vitamin D for bone health, blood sugar regulation, immune function, mood. And we now have really strong data coming out of multiple observational studies. We don't have clinical trials in this area yet, but multiple observational studies showing that we're seeing better breast cancer clinical outcomes in women with sufficient vitamin D. And what we're assessing that as is greater than 30 nanograms per milliliter. And this is a test that can be easily ordered by any lab. We have a very clear target range between 30 and 50, and there's very few interactions with vitamin D and low risk. So this is something that we're really starting to recommend routinely in clinic. However, there are a number of causes of concern, so we're going to talk about those a little bit. There's different levels of data that we have on which to base our recommendations. There's clinical trial data, observational data, and in vitro data. So you can see here, these are the common, some of the most commonly used dietary supplements. Multivitamins, we're concerned with antioxidant interactions, especially if women are on pro-oxidant treatments that work through oxidative stress mechanisms. Some dietary, some multivitamins affect absorption. And importantly, a lot of the, in the breast cancer world, a lot of the women's-focused multivitamins have estrogenic-acting herbal products in there. And so we have to, we screen a lot to understand if there's anything that could be proestrogenic. As we know, fish oil and omega-3 fatty acids can increase bleeding risk. Turmeric, if you look online, it can cure everything, but we don't actually have data showing that. So you can see a host of potential interactions that we have there. Again, a lot of breast cancer patients are coming in using turmeric supplements, but some early data is suggesting that it might have estrogenic properties. And so we're very concerned about that in hormone-receptor-positive breast cancers. Melatonin is something that a lot of people take to support sleep. However, there's, the things that we're most concerned here are its antioxidant effects using during treatment, and again, some in vitro data is suggesting that there might be some estrogenic effects there, too. So when we're thinking about melatonin, we need to think about what other options do women have for sleep support besides melatonin. And then finally, with medicinal mushrooms, the usage of these are on the rise. We are concerned about some hepatotoxicities, increasing bleeding risks, and then there's quite a few SIP interactions as well. Now, some of the folks here on this panel, who I've worked with for years, we've conducted some observational studies showing that we're seeing poorer survival in breast cancer patients after taking some very specific dietary supplements. We did a study over a decade ago now, showing that combination carotenoids in dietary supplement form was increased with increased all-cause mortality. And Dr. Ambersoni led a study that was using data out of SWOG, showing that both iron and B12 supplementation were associated with poorer outcomes. Now, and both, those are just observational studies, but those are enough to give us pause, to understand, you know, are these really indicate, or we need to understand, are these really indicated in the clinical setting? And is there anything else that women can be doing instead of these? So not, just because something is natural does not mean that it's safe. So cannabis, what is it? So there's cannabis sativa and cannabis indica. Those are two different strains of cannabis. It's a schedule-one drug, according to the US FDA. It's regulated differently across the United States, regulated differently state-by-state for both medicinal and recreational use. And so depending on what state you're in depends on what access patients have to safe products. There are over 100 different cannabinoids within cannabis, and those are the bioactive components of cannabis. The two that are most commonly known are THC and CBD. THC is the compound that causes the psychoactive component. It also causes the high or the feelings of euphoria. But for medicinal uses, they're very active in pain, sleep, nausea, and appetite. CBD is active in epilepsy, anxiety, and it's an antioxidant, it's anti-inflammatory, it may reduce pain. And so these are just some of the different reasons that patients might be using these. But there's a number of concerns here. So there's multiple routes of consumption. People can smoke it, vape it, eat it, put it in a tincture, put it on their skin. And there's a range of safety considerations. There's cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome, which even though people are taking cannabis to help control nausea and vomiting, sometimes it actually can exacerbate it. So that's really important, and the rate of this is definitely on the rise right now. Cannabis can exacerbate mood disorders, especially around anxiety and depression. And there can be some issues related to cardiac function. Obviously, there can be addiction issues, and there's plenty of drug interaction concerns. And we have major, major challenges in this area. There's been little, limited research because federal funding to date has not poured a lot of research funds into this area, and we have very limited data on recommended formulation, dose, duration of use. And so again, depending on what state somebody is located in depends on whether or not they can go to a medicinal dispensary and buy cannabis that is medical-grade and highly regulated, or if it's very different than what you might buy on the street. So in cannabis used by cancer survivors, we're seeing an increasing percentage of cancer survivors starting to use cannabis for pain, insomnia, mood, stress, appetite, or recreational use. There was a national study that was conducted in some of the online breast cancer support groups, and within that population, almost half of the people, respondents, thought that cannabis could treat cancer. We do not have data right now suggesting that cannabis can treat cancer. Less than half of people discuss the use with physician, and the majority used during treatment. There was another study that was conducted, surveying NCI comprehensive cancer centers or patients in NCI comprehensive cancer centers, and that's a large study of over 13,000 individuals. Over 65% of those respondents believe that there were some risks associated with cannabis use. So that was good to know, that people are starting to become aware of that. But also, 85% of them perceive some benefit to cannabis use, meaning that there's also, you know, very high use. But one of the things that was really, I think, the most concerning out of this large survey was that cannabis use was disclosed by only about 22% of patients on average. But if you looked at the areas of the country where cannabis use is illegal, then the reporting and discussion with physicians even dropped. And so when we're thinking about interactions and understanding safety, we really need to have an environment where patients can have safe discussions with patients about what they're doing. So some of our causes of concern are mostly really related interactions with cancer treatment that affect drug metabolism. We have low-level, we don't have great quality data here because most of these studies have been in preclinical models, and we really don't have data yet on the long-term outcomes. There was a poster at ASCO this year that reported on the potential medication interactions among patients receiving, undergoing treatment, and breast cancer patients comprised about 15% of that population. But within that study, the most common related treatment, potential medication interactions were related to paclotaxol and doxirubicin, both which are commonly used by breast cancer patients. And this table below just shows some of the potential mechanisms of action that are of concern with interactions. And so again, what's really important is to have, for physicians or clinicians to be having conversations with patients, to understand if they're using cannabis, if there's a potential for interaction. And the results of the interactions can go both ways. Sometimes the interactions increase the metabolism of the drug, so the drug actually clears the system much more quickly, which means that the drug doesn't have as much opportunity to act in the body. Other times, the interactions can slow down the metabolism of the drug, meaning that the drug then stays around the system much longer and can cause more side effects of the drug. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to consider here. So where does that leave us? How do we move forward? Sometimes it's a little debilitating to think about all the things that we don't have. But we actually, going forward, we have some really great information from clinical practice guidelines. So what are the role of clinical practice guidelines in this area? So clinical practice guidelines are, is a systemic, systematic process to review the evidence at hand and to make clinical recommendations. This facilitates shared decision-making between patients, their caregivers, their loved ones, and their providers. And there's a number of groups that develop clinical practice guidelines in this area. So one is the Society for Integrative Oncology, of which I'm a past president and very involved with them. We have a partnership with ASCO right now. I'm going to talk here about some of our guidelines. NCCN has guidelines that address some dietary supplements, as does Masq. So these are the SIO/ASCO clinical practice guidelines. In 2014, we published our, SIO published our first guideline on the use of integrative therapies during breast cancer treatment, and that was updated in 2017. And in 2018, ASCO endorsed our guideline. And since that time, we've had a really lovely partnership with ASCO, where we've developed joint clinical practice guidelines. To date, we've published them in pain, anxiety, and fatigue, and those have all been published in JCO. And so I'm going to dive into those a little bit and share some information of what we found specifically related to dietary supplements. So this was published in 2017, again, updated or endorsed in 2018. We're getting ready to do another update of this, hopefully in the next year or two. So so far, based on the guidelines, we have data where we can suggest ginseng in conjunction with antiemetics for nausea/vomiting during, actually, that should not say ginseng, that should say ginger, that is a typo. So ginger plus antiemetics for nausea/vomiting during chemotherapy. And then for ginseng, it can be used for fatigue during cancer treatment. And this study specifically for ginseng was of American ginseng ground root, and it was for eight weeks duration. So we really don't have data on the long-term safety and efficacy. In addition, some ginseng preparations do have estrogenic properties, specifically if they're in an alcohol base. And so we have to be concerned about what form of ginseng people are taking. And these are all grade C level recommendations, meaning it's, you know, moderate to weak information, but it's, the data's strong enough to support patients and their clinicians are having a discussion about this. However, we have a much longer list of things not to take. So there's a whole, there's a list of products that have been shown to be ineffective in the setting of breast cancer. Alivera and hyaluronic acid are not effective for acute radiation skin reaction. Glutamine has not been shown to be effective for nausea and vomiting during chemotherapy. Acetyl L-carnitine and guarana are not effective for fatigue. Soy is not effective for hot flashes. And a study that we did within SWOG showed that acetyl L-carnitine actually made chemotherapy-induced peripheral neuropathy worse. So again, just because something's natural doesn't mean that it's safe. So this is one of the guidelines coming between the SIO/ASCO partnership. This is our guideline on pain. There's really important information here for breast cancer survivors related to AI-related, aromatase inhibitor-related joint pain. And so here, we have good data now on acupuncture and yoga, that this can be useful for mitigating these side effects. You can see there's a whole host of other non-pharmacologic approaches there that can be used to manage other symptoms. We have no dietary supplements that can be recommended in the setting of pain at this point. For anxiety and depression, we have one thing that might be considered a dietary supplement. This is lavender essential oil inhalation. This is like basically lavender aromatherapy. This can be used to help with anxiety during active treatment. And again, you can see there's a whole host of non-pharmacologic approaches that can be useful for managing other anxiety and depression issues. For fatigue, we have, again, here's the ginseng recommendation that pops up for ginseng during active treatment. And for something that should not be used, is again, L-carnitine should not be used to address fatigue. Here, we have a host of non-pharmacologic options for patients. We also have exercise in there as well, which is important to pay attention to and has been very effective for addressing fatigue in quite a few patients. And then what it, so ASCO came out this year with its first guideline on cannabis. And so I'm just going to, I want to point out really the state of the science at this point, which I really commend ASCO for coming out with this guideline and setting information forth. We actually came out with a patient handout for our patients at Fred Hutch, and we had to go through legal and get the institutional buy-in for us to come out and do that. But the key takeaways here is that cannabis and cannabinoids are considered medicinal. They're thought to have medicinal properties. And the ASCO guideline process was the same that was used in all other ASCO clinical practice guidelines. Currently, at this point, we only have data to really weekly support the use of cannabis and cannabinoids as a management strategy for refractory chemotherapy-induced nausea and vomiting. So we are really hoping that going forward, that there will be more research in this area, high-quality research, that can provide better information to patients on what to use. But, so ASCO has a plan to continue updating this over time. So where does that leave us? Use of dietary supplements and cannabis is very high in breast cancer patients. We have very limited data supporting efficacy. We can make these recommendations at this point. Avoid vitamin D deficiency. This can be easily monitored in the clinical setting. Lavender aromatherapy can be used for anxiety. Ginseng can be used for fatigue. And cannabis can be used for refractory nausea/vomiting. That's a pretty short list, but we're hoping that it's going to grow over time when we have better data. At the same time, there is a whole host of other non-pharmacologic approaches that can be just or just as effective or more effective than dietary supplements. The potential for interactions with these is incredibly high, and pharmacy review is essential. And so it's really important that clinicians and their patients work with the pharmacy teams to conduct these reviews. We need to have informed decision-making between patients and providers. And really, at this point, other effective approaches need to be considered for health promotion, including nutrition, physical activity, acupuncture, massage, yoga, and meditation. And today, you're going to hear about nutrition and physical activity. So what we do at the Hutch is that we really focus on whole-person care, nutrition and physical activity, weight management, sleep hygiene, fatigue, stress management. We educate on the safe and appropriate use of natural products, and we often move patients towards non-pharmacologic options to meet their goals. So here's a host of resources that are available, freely available. So we have the SIO and ASCO guidelines. The SIO website has these as an addition to training modules for patients and providers on how to use these effectively. There's options there for dietary supplement interactions and quality from the Natural Medicines Database and Consumer Lab. There's the American Cancer Society, AACR, and our Fred Hutch Cook for Your Life website that provide information on lifestyle behaviors. And then we have all of the NIH institutes that support this work and have information on their websites as well. So in closing, they have, there's a, if anybody's interested in this area, the Society for Integrative Oncology has an annual conference. The next one's going to be in Boston, hosted by Dana Farber, in October of 2025. There's a great patient advocates group, as well as, it's a great place for researchers to, and clinicians to learn more about the state of the science. Thank you very much.
So thank you, Dr. Greenley. There's a few questions from the audience that I will ask you. And if there are questions, please try to make them broad and general and not very specific questions that are more appropriate for your own clinician. So one question, Dr. Greenley, what are your thoughts on protein powders as a means of supplementing protein intake?
So we spend a lot of time working with our nutrition team, and protein, we do think that having adequate protein during treatment is very important. We tend to offer a protein powder supplement or suggest a protein powder supplement that doesn't have any other additives to it. I think Bob's Red Mill makes something that they recommend that doesn't have anything, any additional additives. But if people are interested in protein supplementation, it's really important to work with our nutrition teams to understand what their targeted protein goals are. We see often patients have, aren't getting enough protein in their diet, but we also see patients sometimes having too much protein in their diet.
Okay. Do you prohibit melatonin use or just try another way to manage insomnia?
We don't prohibit anything. We, it really is up to the patients of what they want to do, and they need to make an informed decision. We, some patients do take melatonin if it's, depending on what phase of treatment they're in. But we also talk to patients about a lot of other non-pharmacologic options as well, and then it's up to the patients on what they want to do.
What about the use of creatine during breast cancer treatment?
I don't know anything about the use of creatine during breast cancer treatment.
Is there any study with cannabis for arthralgia in patients with AI use?
I don't know. Somebody should do that study. I don't know about that.
What do you do when patients ask about specific brands of supplements?
That's where there's a, and I was trying to get back to it, there, that's where, there's a website called Consumer Labs. You have to pay for access to it, but it reviews the quality of the different brands. And so we rely on that to understand the quality of the specific brand. There's a lot of brands out there that are not high-quality, and it's important for patients to know what they're taking.
Do you have any data about CBD and hot flashes?
I do not, but somebody else might.
How do we navigate the lack of federal regulations on medicinal cannabis to make decisions? Main regulators found recreational higher quality than medicinal.
Vote.
Integrative oncology programs are so important, but the waiting list to be seen can be a year-plus. What can a patient do while they wait to be seen?
I think having really clear conversations with their oncology providers is important. That's why we publish these guidelines, because those are published in the leading oncology journal. All providers have access to them, and I think they can really facilitate a conversation with the physicians, with the advanced practice providers, with the pharmacists. A lot of pharmacists are becoming much more familiar with how to review for dietary supplement interactions. And so use the clinical team that you have and really engage with them and let them know what you're interested in doing. I think, you know, we're speaking here, the practice of oncology is changing, and I think there's many more open spaces to discuss this now.
There's a couple of questions about probiotics. What about probiotics for diarrhea or other GI side effects?
Our general recommendation is to get, use, eat probiotic foods. And if people are having diarrhea side effects, they really need to be working, most often with the nursing team, sometime with their medical team, but really working with them, and sometimes the nutrition team, to think about what's safe to use and really what's effective. I'll say on our Cook for Your Life website, we have information there about how to use nutrition to manage some GI-related side effects, and so I'd encourage you to look there as well.
In the ASCO guideline, there's some expressed concerns about the negative interaction between immunotherapy and cannabis. What do we have about that?
Yes, we are, we do have some concerns there. I'd say we also have some concerns, I didn't mention, well, it was on the slide, but around immunotherapy and medicinal mushrooms. And so we know that these compounds can change the immune system. We have no idea how they interact with the immunomodulatory drugs in immunotherapy. And given that we think there's great hope and great promise in the immunotherapies to address breast cancer specifically, we don't want to do anything to get in the way of those therapies. And so we recommend that our patients are not using any supplements that could potentially interact negatively with immunotherapies. We definitely need more research in this area.
So we're kind of running out of time, but I saved time with the introduction, didn't I? Do you recommend tart cherry juice concentrate for AI-induced arthralgia?
We actually do. There is one very, very small study on that. The concern there, the concern there is that tart cherry juice has very high levels of sugar in it. And so if anybody's who's diabetic, there would be some concern that that could be a problem as well. But there is one very small study showing that that's effective.
Can you take DIMM to lower estrogen?
No. So diethyl methane is a product that's a dietary supplement that, if you read online, some people think that you can use that instead of some of the breast cancer, tamoxifen or aromatase inhibitors. We do not see that in our data. We do not have any reason to recommend that, but there's a lot of health claims out there. So we do not recommend the use of DIMM.
What about magnesium supplements?
Magnesium, we see for using with, for sleep often with patients, and has a very low toxicity profile. And it can cause some diarrhea, but there's different forms of magnesium that don't cause diarrhea. That's something, again, to be measured and assessed by the oncology team if there's, I mean, sometimes during treatment, magnesium levels can drop, but it's a relative, it's a supplement with a relatively low side effect toxicity profile.
And then one last one. What about the negative MVI data for adjuvant breast cancer? Is it multivitamin?
Yeah. We, I'm not sure if there's a specific study in mind, but we haven't seen a lot of benefit in general across all of medicine for taking multivitamins. There's one study recently published that showed there's possible benefit for some long-term cognitive function. But in general, we really recommend getting nutrients through food and thinking about food as medicine. and thinking about food as medicine as opposed to taking dietary supplements. In general, people come into our offices with lists and lists or bags of dietary supplements. We recommend that people take, don't take the majority, vast majority of those and really think about using these other non-pharmacologic approaches.
Yeah, I agree with you about food and I've always felt that way. And then that SWOG study where you showed the iron in the B12 results. We did find that multivitamin intake reduced risk about 20% in these people with high-risk breast cancer on a therapeutic trial. But it could be other things about people who take multivitamins.
Right, right. So in epidemiology, we think about the healthy user effect. And so that's why we really need trials. And so observational data is, even though we're epidemiologists, observational data is definitely limited to be able to make strong recommendations.
Okay, we'll do this last one and then anything else we'll save for the longer discussion. Does fasting mimicking diet help in chemo efficacy?
We don't know at this point. There's some really interesting provocative data on that. There's probably some great posters that are going to be here and maybe even some speakers. We don't, we don't know. And what, one of the concerns that we have when it comes to fasting or is patients can drop a lot of muscle mass and drop a lot of weight unintentionally during treatment. And so again, working really closely with the oncology team and the nutrition team is really important to make sure that it's done safe. What we recommend is fasting no more than 13 to 16 hours around, at any point, because we're, we're seeing patients just dropping a lot of muscle mass. And so we need to make sure that they're getting enough nutrients, enough protein to be able to make that effective. And so it's definitely not a panacea. And there's, NCI is funding a lot of new research in this area right now.
That was great. Thanks so much.
Great, yeah. Thank you all.
So our next speaker is Dr. Don Dezon from Brown University.
Thank you very much for covering these topics and for including me. This is going to be a quickie. I was asked to talk about sexuality after cancer. All right, so here are our learning objectives. We're going to talk about the incidence and significance of sexual health issues after breast cancer and then go into intimacy and how that relates to intercourse from the perspectives of both men and women. And then finally outline what we as providers can do. It's not just to fulfill our curiosity. There's actually things that are evidence-based we can recommend to people to improve their lives and the lives of their partners. The incidence of sexual problems, you just scan this list and it's common. And it doesn't matter if it's a sexual organ-related cancer or not. The reason for the variability, the reason it's 50 to 90% depends on how you ask the questions. If I ask this audience, how many of you having issues with intercourse? I will get one set of answers. If I ask the audience, how many of you are having issues with your partner as it relates to your intimacy? It'll be a very different answer. But ultimately, the bottom line is this is a common issue. And too often, even today, it's not addressed. It is also not something we see just as people are being treated. This is something that follows them throughout their entire lives, even after they're done with their cancer treatment, if they are lucky enough to be treated with curative intent. This is a very old publication now, but it looked at over 3,000 survivors of which people with breast cancer is one of the predominant groups. It skewed younger and it skewed educated. But sexual function and satisfaction were the third most common issue, yet less than half ever received any guidance or counseling regarding it. People are suffering silently with this issue and it is affecting more than just themselves. Sexual health, if you, if you are thinking about what I am talking about, I can guarantee not everybody is thinking about this the same way. It is actually a complicated, multi-domain issue encompassing intimacy and sensuality, how one looks at themselves and their body image, arousal, desire, climax, and most of all, satisfaction. This is what I mean by the sexual health of every single one of us and the sexual health of the people we treat. The first question, which I will not ask for volunteers, although I know many of you in the audience, after a diagnosis of cancer, sexual health in men and women is impacted very similarly. The answer here is false. This is how we tend to think of male sexuality, okay? It's an on and off switch. When men are aroused and erect, they tend to reach for their partners, tend to have intimate moments because it leads to something. And that's not an empty emotion. I have been told by male partners that the most intimate thing that they can do as a husband or lover is to be inside of the person that they love. That is an intimate moment. Intimacy and intercourse are intertwined for men. For women, it's not. For women, it's more about a computer board. Most of you will go through your lives not thinking about why you're aroused, why it's enjoyable, because it just is. Now imagine being told you have cancer, being, you know, having a part of your body removed, going through chemotherapy, all of these mechanics being disrupted, sitting in your computer, turning on the screen, hearing a bit of a whir and then nothing, blank screen. The anxiety that it produces in me is shared among many of you in the audience. That is essentially what it is like for many who see me in this clinic. They don't understand what just happened. And it's something that they don't even know how to talk about. So here's what I tell people when they see me in clinic. These are the basics, again, I'm going to rush through this. But this is a model that was proposed by Rosemary Bassin, a gynecologist. And it was a female sexual health, not specific to cancer, but there's some data that women who are diagnosed with breast cancer actually understand this and it speaks to them. Essentially, it begins with intimacy. That's what wakes up the sexually neutral person. This want of something more in their life is the signal that their body is responsive. When certain areas are touched, they experience arousal. And that arousal is what feeds desire. And when desire is satisfied, the circle propagates. Every single one of these arrows can be impacted by everything we do after a cancer diagnosis. But there's one thing that's really important for women to understand because it's not inherently important in female sexuality. And that is the absence of sexual activities, okay? And the way I explain this is that women experience pleasure, climax, satisfaction separately from how they experience intimacy. And the way I explain this to partners is if you ever came home and she was exhausted and sitting there and you just decided on your own to make dinner and then you actually cleaned the kitchen, that is a highly intimate experience that can actually feed that stimulation and can actually bring satisfaction to anybody. So intercourse, sexual activities, while a part of female sexual health, is not inherently important. But there's something else as well in breast cancer treatment. Jennifer Goss, a colleague of mine in Providence, termed breast-specific sensuality. She did a convenience survey who came to a surgical clinic for follow-up and asked everybody, how important is, was your chest or your breasts to your sense of sexuality? Before surgery, everybody, everybody felt their breasts was a sexual organ. It was what helped stimulate and produce arousal. See how much that drops after surgery. Breast conserving surgery, lumpectomy, it drops by 10 points. Mastectomy without reconstruction, nearly half. And mastectomy with reconstruction, very similar to breast cancer specific, or breast conserving surgery. But here's the other thing, that breast touch doesn't equal pleasure after treatment for cancer. If you look at lumpectomy, almost half experience nothing or it's unpleasant when their treated breast is touched. And over 70% have that experience after a mastectomy with reconstruction. A reconstructed breast can look natural, but it will never function naturally. That is not something most women who undergo reconstruction are aware of at the time. So what do we do with all of this information? I tend to think of the approach to sexual health in two different categories. What can we do to improve vaginal health, which with a healthier vagina, there will be more pleasure, we hope, with sexual activities? And then what are the things we can do to make pleasure more of a reality for people treated for breast cancer? Genital, the genital symptoms of menopause, genital urinary symptoms of menopause are important when we talk about how to go about treating. The primary modality of therapy is a moisturizer, a vaginal moisturizer. There are multiple types, polycarbophilic-based, hyaluronic-based, and they're all available without prescription. If you take anything from this talk, the advice is to use these products five times a week and then one hour before sexual plays. That is not written on any label of a vaginal moisturizer. DHEA, dehydroepiandrosterone, is something that can be used if moisturizers are not effective. There is a very nice randomized trial by Deb Barton that showed it. And importantly, a separate publication showed that this drug does not increase estrogen levels even on an AI beyond the upper limit of normal of the, of the estrogen assays. Vaginal estrogen is not contraindicated. And this has been a source of controversy recently. But just in November, a new meta-analysis was included, which included two very important studies done in Europe by Agarwal and Cold. Both of those studies suggested that use of vaginal estrogen while on an AI was associated with an increased risk of a breast cancer recurrence. When you put this in totality of the data that is available, there is no increased risk of a breast cancer recurrence with vaginal estrogen and there is no mortality risk as well. Dr. Greenly spoke about the healthy user bias that is at play with vaginal estrogen. I am likely more apt to see healthier women and their partners who are exploring sexuality. It is not to say I am not seeing women with metastatic disease involving their liver and lung in a sexual health clinic because I am. But the majority of people who are going to go on vaginal estrogen feel fine and they want to do everything they can to improve this part of their lives. Beyond that, for sexual comfort, vaginal lubricants, not a moisturizer, but vaginal lubricants are essential after treatment for breast cancer in the post-menopausal as well as in the pre-menopausal person. There's very limited data that looks at this. The study I'm quoting here was done in women without a history of breast cancer, essentially showing no preference. Natural oils, there's some who really would like to try something that's non-chemical. Coconut and olive oil are often used. Theoretically, we, we recommend not doing this because of the potential impact, it could go rancid in a dry, relatively dry vaginal environment. But there's this very small study of 25 people where they did use olive oil. And if you look at that last bullet, 73% really liked using olive oil. So again, it is a choice people need to make. The one issue that I can't see, and I hope I see, and I'll explain why in a moment, is dysperonia. There are two types of dysperonia. It requires a pelvic exam. If anyone needs a pelvic exam when they're complaining of sexual health issues, it's when women complain of pain. Because pain can be at the entrance called the vestibule and it can be at the muscle within the vagina called vaginismus. Four women, and this is very common on an AI, who have vestibular tenderness, so pain located at the entry point of the vagina, I can fix it that day. And this was a randomized trial of 46 breast cancer survivors using saline or a very dilute liquid-based lidocaine. And it showed that with lidocaine, you could drop the pain scores. And with open label, nine out of 10 were having vaginal intercourse again with lidocaine. And I have seen this in real-world practice. For people with vaginismus, the only thing we can offer are vaginal dilators. They come in very different forms. Unfortunately, the evidence base that this actually works doesn't exist. And the reason is compliance is terrible with vaginal dilators. But again, for women who, who are unable to have intercourse, this can put some of that control in their hands. If they're not effective, that's when I actually do refer to pelvic physical therapy, which can be very, very helpful. There are medications that we can use to improve sexual interest or arousal. Flabanserin has the approval in pre-menopausal women. It is a daily-dosed medication. And there is the slightest data out of Memorial Sloan-Kettering that it can actually work for women after breast cancer. And the reason why we need to test this in women treated for breast cancers because of many of the drugs our patients are on were exclusionary in the trials otherwise. Hormone therapy, benzodiazepines could not be used, anti-estrogens. Brimalatinide is a subcutaneous injection that has to be used 45 minutes before. There's no evidence that that works. Testosterone, there was a negative randomized controlled trial for that, but there were smaller studies suggesting that it did work. The issue, and you need to know, testosterone 1% cream is what's used for women, is not available in the US by prescription. Be appropriate on PD5 inhibitors, not really that helpful, so not really used. My only other thing to say is never forget the partner. If you're trying to improve the sexual relationship, it means it's two, if not more, people in that room needs to be spoken with. This is true for same-sex couples as well. Involving the partners to set expectations, to voice expectations and then to set shared goals is really important. And in my practice, I like to use the language of conflict resolution, which is do not blame the other person, states, using statements that refer to what you are going through, so I. And I ask them, say, what do you hope for? What do you hope for? What do you want? What do you wish for? All the things can help them set their goals. And there's actually an exercise that can be done called Senseate Focus, which is a structured intimacy exercise in four stages that can help people rediscover intimacy as its own objective. I'm going to leave you with the fact, the fact that after cancer, everyone deserves a sex life. That includes the young adult and the older patient. It includes people in relationships and those not yet in one. It includes your sexual and gender-minoritized communities. And it includes your women and men living with advanced or metastatic disease. And most of all, it includes you, the oncologist. Thank you very much.
So we have, we have questions that have come in. Topical estrogens in which dose and frequency?
So the, so this is actually an important point because many of the studies that looked at estrogen in the past have used higher doses than are commercially available today. My preference is to use the lowest dose possible, and that's usually a pill, vaginal estrogen at a milligram dose. And I like the pill because it's less messy and women can actually adhere to it. The other thing that is common practice is to prescribe it in durations of high-frequency, low-frequency, and then time-limited. So use it three times a week, up to, you know, eight weeks, and then drop it down to once a week and then stop after three months and see how much the effect can, can persist. There's a theoretical risk, right, with unopposed estrogen. If it, if, if the uterus is seeing it, you could cause endometrial thinking and potentially endometrial cancer. That has not been described at all with these low, low, low-dose preps. Again, likely, it's because we're not using it unselectively.
And here's a similar question. What's the recommended dose? What's the recommended dose and administration to prescribe DHEA?
DHEA comes as a, I would refer you back to the Barton article, which is what I use, and the references on my slides.
And there are a couple of questions about testosterone. Very high use and interest of testosterone in my patient population with gynecologists here, breast cancer survivors, personal experience with patients. And then there's another, safety of testosterone in triple-negative breast cancer. Could they have AR positive? Another, is testosterone safe for patients complaining of vaginal dryness, other sexual side effects on AI in OFS, hormone-positive breast cancer?
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in testosterone. And again, there's been two very nice studies. One of them was conducted at the University of Vermont by Sabrina Witherby, who's in the audience, showing it has an impact. Again, part of the thing that we deal with in this country today is there's no FDA-approved prescription. So we are left with having to compound testosterone 1% cream in a hypoallergenic base if you are going to prescribe it. And the problem is, like with a lot of integrative therapies, there's no way to confirm the concentrations in it. But with all the preparations that are out there, realize that women require 1/10 the dose of men. In terms of the side effect profile, you know, with that very, very low dose and a gradual increase in levels, you need to follow these very carefully. I have not seen virilization. I have not seen voice octave changes as well, and I have not seen liver function abnormalities. The question about androgen receptors is really interesting, especially because there has been work looking at the androgen receptor in triple-negative breast cancers. The data I can pull from is from transgender people, where the AR is often checked for transgender men on gender-affirming testosterone, higher dose than we see. You will see these androgen receptors. It's a very complicated interplay with the ER and the PR. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of data out there, because again, testosterone is not used commonly. And if we do use it, it's in highly, highly selected cases.
And somewhat related to what you were saying, how does your advice change or stay the same with gender non-conforming patients?
So I've thought about this a lot, and a plug for all of you is that there is a paper that we just released in CA, a cancer journal for clinicians, on the care of the transgender patient with cancer. I would refer you there. We have a tendency to be very parental when it comes to testosterone preparation for transgender men with breast cancer, and our instinct isn't to not prescribe it. You have to recognize the evidence to support the withholding of testosterone for gender-affirming hormone, or for transgender men doesn't exist. That data does not exist. There are two data sets that may be relevant for us here. One is you can prescribe an aromatassimeter at the same time you prescribe testosterone to prevent peripheral conversion to estrogen. That has been done for women in menopause. Okay? So there's a safety signal that it's okay to do, provided someone is on an AI. The second is that if you look at men with breast cancer, we're not performing ADT on men with breast cancer. We're blocking the estrogen receptor with Tamoxifen. So based on those two data sets, my hope is that shared decision-making plays out and that transgender men with breast cancer have a say in how they want to survive their breast cancer, realizing that gender-affirming hormone therapy is not necessarily a choice they want to make.
And for issues with sexual interest arousal, what can you recommend for patients? Are there typically underlying anxiety or mood disorders? This is such a challenge.
It is a very big challenge. I can say that a primae sexual interest disorder after breast cancer is pretty rare. I have seen it. And those are very challenging. So just to understand, these are women who can have sexual activities, can achieve orgasm, can enjoy the whole process, and then when it's over, they don't need to do it again, ever, ever. Okay? So there's a problem with interest, that that feedback loop is not hitting that well. Again, there are medications that could be used. I tend to focus more on couples' therapy, so psychological support for couples, I think, is really important. And then finding an alternative way to express oneself sexually is also important as well. So that's where I go to Sensei focusing, to make intimacy the primary objective for the couple. So there's more of a realignment of expectations.
So do you have recommendations for sexual positions for patients with bone metastasis who may be experiencing pain?
There's the cowgirl position. Heather. No, I mean, I think, now, to be completely, so if you don't know that, I'll tell you what it is afterwards, but, or you can Google it, it's fine. But, you know, so these are highly, highly individual discussions that need to be held with a person who has bone metastases. The anecdote I will share is that I did see someone with metastatic disease specific to her bones, and they were having sex with him behind while she was seated, so it wouldn't be pressure on her bone metastases, and asked for alternative positions. And most of her mets were in her spine, so I suggested they take one of those aerobic medicine balls, right, and put a pillow on it, and have her lay on that, and rock back and forth as a means for them to have sex. Nobody taught me that in any school. Okay? So this is essentially part of the joy, honestly, of doing sexual health. As an oncologist, we live in a world of life and death, where, you know, 80% of everything we do is fairly stressful and not very heartwarming. Being able to divorce yourself from your oncology practice and talk to someone about everything else that makes their lives full of joy is actually an honor. So yeah, so the problem solving is probably one of the best parts of being a sexual health doc.
So there are several questions.
No more questions about positions.
There are several that are very specific, and maybe we'll see if we can get those in. Are there other recommendations for contacting you or sources for information?
You can DM me on Instagram, and then I'm happy to give you my information. Otherwise, I think it's, I'm on the ASCO, you can contact me through the ASCO membership directory as well.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Dr. Ricky Canietto from Roswell Park, talking about exercise.
I am an exercise scientist and a cancer epidemiologist, and my research focus is on understanding the relationship between modifiable lifestyle factors, primarily physical activity and body composition, and how those lifestyle factors impact anti-tumor immunity and cancer outcomes. My goal for today's talk is to provide an overview regarding what is known and what is not known in the extant literature regarding the relationships between exercise, physical activity, and cancer. And we will also present some published and preliminary data specific to breast cancer, leveraging observational data from three studies from members of our panel today. Thanks. Oh, there we go. Perfect. I have no financial relationships to disclose. And to begin, I would like to define and differentiate some very basic definitions, which will help with interpretation of the physical activity guidelines and the epidemiological evidence. So first things first, the textbook definition of physical activity is simply any bodily movement that increases your resting metabolic rate. When we talk about meeting the physical activity guidelines for Americans, we really are focusing on what we refer to as recreational or leisure-time physical activity, and even more specifically on moderate-to-vigorous intensity recreational physical activity. And to quantify what is meant by moderate-to-vigorous physical activity, we can use two different frameworks. On the top, you can see a ratings of perceived exertion, where you can just envision a scale of 1 to 10, whereas 1, maybe you're sitting here listening to a talk, and 10 is such maximal exertion that you wouldn't be able to continue that. Where moderate-to-vigorous physical activity falls is somewhere between the 4 to 5 for moderate physical activity and 6 to 7 for vigorous activity. And it's often said that if you can carry on a conversation while you're exercising, that is probably moderate, but if you can talk and not sing, that is probably vigorous. And when we talk about exercise, exercise is a very specific and structured goal, the goal of exercise is very specific and structured, to increase either health-related physical fitness or sport-related physical fitness. And physical inactivity and sedentary behavior are actually two different things. When we talk about physical inactivity, what is meant by that is there is no regular recreational physical activity throughout the day, whereas sedentary behavior is an independent behavior characterized by sitting or lying down. And somebody can be very physically active and meet the physical activity guidelines, but still accumulate a large number of hours of sedentary behavior. So what are the physical activity guidelines for Americans? The most recent guidelines from the CDC in 2018, first and foremost, recommends that Americans move more and sit less throughout the day. But the specific recommendation for aerobic physical activity is that adults should aim to meet the minimum recommendation, which is 150 to 300 minutes of moderate physical activity, or if your focus is vigorous activity, that number would be 75 to 100 minutes per week, or any combination of those two. One thing that's very often lost in translation is that additional benefits can be achieved if you move beyond the minimum guideline. So one thing that we often see in literature and in popular media is that you want to hit that 150-minute mark, but the minimum guideline is actually 150 to 300. And then there's a caveat that if you can pursue more, then that's better. And in addition, the recommendation is to do muscle strengthening activities that focuses on all of your major muscles in the whole body at least twice a week. And there are many well-established benefits of physical activity. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read them all, but I will direct you to the column on the right, wherein many of these benefits, including improved quality of life, reduced anxiety, reduced risk of depression, improved sleep, these are all factors that affect cancer patients and that can also help with prognosis. So based on these benefits, many leading organizations recommend that people living with and beyond cancer aim to meet the physical activity guidelines. There's a published guideline from the American Cancer Society. There's a published guideline from ASCO, which I'll talk more specifically about in a few slides. Also, the American Institute for Cancer Research, and of course, the American College of Sports Medicine. But despite these recommendations, actually, a very small percentage of cancer survivors meet the physical activity guidelines for Americans. And the prevalence is lowest in women and older patients. So on the left, you can see a chart that charts over the years from 1997 to 2022, the trends in the percentage of patients, excuse me, survivors who meet the physical activity guidelines. And you can see the most recent data from 2022, that about 14% of women are actually meeting the recommendations. The middle chart shows the trends by age, and as you can see with the blue triangles, patients that are 65 and older have a much lower prevalence of meeting the physical activity guidelines at about 13%. And then this chart just shows that in older patients diagnosed 45 and above, that cancer survivors have a lower prevalence of meeting the physical activities shown in the teal bar in comparison to patients, or adults in the general population, which is represented by the orange bar. And this is national data from two national studies, US-based studies. And then if you flip it and ask what percentage of cancer survivors do no regular exercise, so in other words, what percentage of cancer survivors are physically inactive, depending on the survey and depending on the age, approximately 40 to 60% of cancer survivors in the U.S. are entirely inactive, meaning no regular physical activity during their leisure time. And again, the bar chart shows cancer survivors in teal, general population in orange, and you can see that a higher prevalence, that physical inactivity is more prevalent in cancer survivors than it is in patients of the same age in the general population. So some key points is that women are most likely to be, more likely to be inactive than men. Survivors aged 45 and above are more likely to be inactive in comparison to the general population. And according to the NHIS study, approximately 40% of adults report no leisure time, and when we switch to NHANES data, that number could be as high as 57%. So based on the fact that we know exercise and physical activity is good for us, there are many established benefits, and we know that the prevalence of meeting the guidelines is quite low, ASCO recently came out with a publication that recommends that all oncology providers counsel patients and advise them to try to meet the aerobic and muscle strengthening guidelines during active treatment with curative intent. And the key conclusions from the 2022 ASCO guideline is that exercise guidelines, exercise interventions during treatment reduce fatigue, preserve cardiovascular fitness, physical functioning, and strength, and improve many components of quality of life, including reduced anxiety and depression and other treatment-related side effects. They add that exercise during treatment has a very low risk of adverse events, and the benefits definitely outweigh the harms. However, there is a lot that we do not know yet. For example, evidence is not sufficient to recommend for or against exercise during treatment to specifically improve survival outcomes or treatment outcomes. So to address this gap in knowledge, we leveraged observational data from three studies from Dr. Amber Soney and Dr. Kushi, who are on the panel. And we realized that we have really good data, again, observational data, to try to answer the question of whether or not meeting the physical activity guidelines before, during, and after cancer treatment can improve survival outcomes in breast cancer patients. And so we have three study populations that total about 6,100 patients. All of the studies are a little bit different in terms of the population. For example, one study is based in California, one study is based in Buffalo, and another study is from a clinic. study is from a clinical trial. But the interesting thing that we see is when we look at the associations of patients who self-report meeting the physical activity guidelines consistently before, during, and after treatment, the associations that we see are strikingly similar. So there was not heterogeneity in these associations. And so I'll walk you through, I'm going to present about five of these forest plots, and I'll, I'll just quickly walk you through what we're looking at. So in the first column, we have the study name, DELCAP, DBBR, and/or pathways. And in the pooled estimate is the, the focus is the red box. But what we see in the first column is, of data is the hazard ratio. That's the percentage of decrease in risk of mortality for these patients who report meeting the guidelines versus patients who are inactive. And the key number that you have to look at is the number in the red box, which shows that the has, the pooled estimate, when we pool all of the data together, which is okay to do in this situation because there is not heterogeneity in the associations in each individual study, we see the hazard ratio is 51.5, and it's highly statistically significant. So what does that translate to? It translates to a 48.5% reduction in mortality. And again, this is comparing patients who self-report physical activity regularly and mortality, self-report physical activity guidelines versus inactivity. And that was for the overall study population. But we also looked by tumor subtype, and we see that the associations are very similar and consistent in each tumor subtype. So in the upper right-hand corner, those are hormone receptor-positive tumors, and we saw a 55% decrease in mortality among women reporting that they met the physical activity guidelines versus women who were inactive. In the bottom left with the purple box, these were patients that had HER2-positive tumors, and the mortality decrease was 49% for those patients. And in the bottom right with the greenish box, you'll see that those were patients diagnosed with triple-negative tumors, and we observed a 59% decrease mortality among those patients, again, comparing patients who met the guidelines versus inactivity. So then we wanted to look at whether or not meeting the physical activity guidelines before, during, and/or after treatment was also associated with a reduced risk of recurrence. And indeed, we saw that when we pooled the data from these three studies, we observed a 31% increase in risk of disease recurrence among patients reporting that they met the physical activity guidelines versus inactivity. So the key findings from this observational data is that meeting the physical activity guidelines versus inactivity before, during, and/or after treatment is associated with a 31% reduction in breast cancer recurrence and a 48% reduction in mortality that was independent of breast cancer subtype. And this is important because to date, an association of post-diagnosis physical activity with breast cancer recurrence has not been well-established in the literature, and there are actually few reports that look at specifically whether or not meeting the federal guideline for physical activity is associated with survival. But the good news is, if the physical activity guidelines seem overwhelming, and you cannot meet them because of barriers or other issues, the message to move more and sit less throughout the day is a very important one. And the reason that it is so important is if you look at the dose-response curve here, you'll see that there is no lower threshold for benefit. In other words, the steepest benefit or the greatest benefit for moving from inactivity to some physical activity happens very early on in that curve, and you can see that very sharp decline or the steep decline in risk very early on. This makes identifying your reference group and analyses very important, because you don't want to mix in to the reference group, patients that are inactive and patients that are low-active. And on the right, this is a publica, this is a graph that was based on national data, again, that was published in JAMA, and I'm, I'm demonstrating here, I, I wanted to include this to show that we also have to consider sedentary behavior. And I mentioned at the beginning of the talk that sedentary behavior is a, an independent behavior. So not only do we want to aim to increase our activity, we also want to aim to decrease sedentary behavior. And the patients that have the greatest decrease in risk are the patients who are most active and have the least sedentary behavior throughout the day. So both are important. Some physical activity is better than none, and adults who sit less and do any amount of moderate to vigorous physical activity gain some health benefits. On this slide, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but because so many people wear Fitbits and other physical activity trackers, and because the 10,000 step per day has kind of become ubiquitous in the popular media, I wanted to provide a little bit of data to kind of, how does the 10,000 step translate to the physical activity guidelines? In other words, is 10,000 steps really needed to achieve the physical activity guidelines? Or is that optimal in terms of cancer survival? The answer is that 10,000 steps is not necessary to achieve the physical activity guidelines. However, based on the available literature in the, that recently published available literature on national cohorts, it does appear that 10,000 to 12,000 steps is where the benefit seems to be the best and starts to plateau. And you can see with the table that there's a nice linear response, starting with 2,000 steps per day all the way up to 16, that the more you do, the better. But you can also achieve a lot of health benefits from being somewhere around 7,000 steps per day. Importantly, there's no minimal threshold in terms of daily steps. And the plateau, in other words, where the kind of the time commitment versus the benefit trade-off starts to happen, that actually might be lower for older women and older adults. So somewhere in the 7,000 to 8,000 step-per-day range. And to give you a translational example, if you're walking 3.0 miles an hour, so a 20-minute mile, achieving the minimum of 150 to 300 minutes per week would require a 22 to 42-minute walk, but that would only equate to potentially 22 to 4200 personal, purposeful steps. So although there has been a lot published, if you do a PubMed search on physical activity and cancer, you'll see that there are over 200 papers published in recent history. There's a lot we don't know. So additional research is needed to elucidate the benefits of exercise in the metastatic breast cancer setting, but the very good news is that there's a brand-new paper that was just published in Nature Medicine that supports that supervised exercise for patients with metastatic breast cancer is beneficial in all of the ways that we talked about at the beginning of this talk. So improved fitness, improved physical activity levels, improved physical functioning, improved cognitive functioning, improved quality of life, decreased pain, fatigue, and insomnia. And we also don't know enough about the benefits of exercise on treatment efficacy, and the biological mechanisms underpinning the observed associations that we've talked about remain largely unknown. So what can oncology providers do now to help patients move through cancer? In the interest of time, I'm, I'm not going to go through this, but I did want to provide this as an example of the literature that's available for oncologists and healthcare providers to help advise, assess, and refer patients. And this particular, these particular figures were taken from the Exercises as Medicine and Oncology manuscript, which I have cited there, and they provide really great tools for clinicians to assess the amount of physical activity a patient is doing, both aerobic and, and strength training, and then how to refer them out for appropriate exercise. So in summary, exercise during cancer treatment reduces fatigue, anxiety, depression, and treatment side effects, and improves sleep, quality of life, cardiovascular fitness, muscular fitness, and physical functioning. Combined data from three observational studies also suggest that meeting the physical activity guidelines before, during, and after breast cancer treatment is associated with nearly a 49% reduction in mortality and a 31% reduction in recurrence. And if you can't meet the physical activity guidelines, there is no minimum threshold. So just sit less and move more. And more research is needed on the effects of exercise on treatment outcomes, and oncology providers should develop a process. You can leverage exercises medicine materials to incorporate assessment of physical activity, advisement to move more and sit less, and referral to appropriate programs. And with that, I will thank everybody for the opportunity to talk at the special section, and thank Dr. Amber Sone and Dr. Kushi for letting me use their data to present here today.
Thank you.
And a few resources for survivors and clinicians.
So we are really, we're really running behind on time, so I think we're going to have to curtail questions. Sorry about that. And now, Dr. Kushi.
Thank you, Christine, and signing to the Breast Cancer Symposium for inviting me to participate in this session. So we've heard about marijuana, anyway, and supplements, sex, moving. I'll talk about eating and drinking. No financial conflicts to disclose. I'll, I will state that anything I say does not represent the official views of Kaiser Permanente, okay? So when we think about diet and cancer, this is a report looking at the risk of developing cancer. It's a voluminous report, the third report that was published in 2018, the very first one was published in 1997. And it basically reviews the voluminous literature relating diet and physical activity to the development of cancer. It comes with a CD, you know, with tons of different sort of summaries of studies, et cetera. But when it comes to physical activity and nutrition, we've just heard about physical activity for people with cancer, this is from a statement from the American Cancer Society, "After receiving a diagnosis of cancer, survivors soon find that there are few clear answers to even the simplest questions, such as, should I change what I eat? Should I exercise more? Should I gain or lose weight? Should I take dietary supplements?" And there still remains relatively little information, but there's growing information, and I'll review some of that. Now, if we go back almost 20 years, along with Christine, we developed the PATHWAY study, and we basically put together this sort of rationale for why we need prospective cohort studies designed specifically to address these types of questions. So here's that report again. The World Cancer Research Fund and American Institute for Cancer Research has, in fact, published just recently a report specifically on breast cancer survivors. This is the only cancer for which they have a specific report that they've summarized literature, because this is the area where there's more than, say, in colorectal cancer, prostate cancer, et cetera, although they have done systematic reviews in those areas. Now, I'm going to present some results from the PATHWAY study, which is a prospective study of breast cancer survivorship funded by the National Cancer Institute. And basically, it was designed to look at effects of lifestyle factors like diet and physical activity and a number of other factors in breast cancer outcomes. And we enrolled about 4,500 women overall from Kaiser Permanente Northern California, where I'm located in the Division of Research. And they were enrolled between January 2006 and 2013 of May, and we continue to follow the women under ongoing funding. And we've looked at a number of different factors, and I won't go into all of that. I will focus specifically here on some of the results that we've recently published in the last couple of years on dietary patterns and how they're associated with outcomes after breast cancer. So dietary patterns basically capture sort of the overall sort of sense of what people are consuming, and we specifically looked at four different dietary patterns based on different sort of dietary guidelines. American Cancer Society Guidelines for Cancer Prevention, the Mediterranean Diet, which many of you have probably heard about, the Dietary Approaches to Stop Hypertension, which was developed through the DASH clinical trial to look at blood pressure lowering, and the Healthy Eat Index, which is based on the US dietary guidelines. And so you can see, these generally look pretty similar, their scales are a little different, they encourage similar things, they discourage similar, similar things. There are some differences as far as these go, but they're largely pretty similar. And so we published this paper led by Isaac Ergas, who's a, was a doctoral student and programmer who works, has worked with us for a long time, and this is part of his recent dissertation, looking at diet quality and breast cancer outcomes in the study. And so basically, just look at the pattern here, these are the four different dietary patterns, and on the right-hand side is high concordance with those dietary patterns, and the reference is the lowest group. And you can see that, generally speaking, there's sort of this lowering trend, meaning the hazard ratio or the relative risk gets lower, meaning fewer events, this overall mortality, fewer deaths occurred among people consuming dietary patterns that are more aligned with these different dietary patterns. Now, if we adjusted for a bunch of different things, you know, sort of it gets attenuated a bit, but we still see at least the high versus low comparison, that there's still this inverse association, meaning higher concordance with these dietary patterns, lower overall mortality over the follow-up period in this study. So this was looking at non-breast cancer specific mortality and all-cause mortality, where we see basically similar things. Breast cancer specific mortality, there was actually less of an association, but in any case, overall mortality, we, we see basically the same sort of thing across the dietary patterns. This is looking at cardiovascular disease risk, which is one of the more common concerns that result in women with breast cancer. And as you can see, there's an additional dietary pattern thrown in here, the Healthy Plant-Based Dietary Index. You can see that there is some variation here overall, when we're looking at cardiovascular disease, when we look at cardiovascular disease mortality. Again, a little bit of variation, the strongest associations with those are those with, from the American Cancer Society and the DASH diet. The DASH diet might make some sense, because that really was developed in the context of cardiovascular, cardiovascular disease risk factor hypertension. And this is looking at different specific cardiovascular disease endpoints, looking specifically at the DASH diet, in a high versus lowest concordance of the, of the DASH diet, dietary pattern. As you can see, generally speaking, lower likelihood of these, developing these various cardiovascular outcomes. We also did analyses looking specifically at cardiotoxic, people who receive cardiotoxic therapies, and basically, we still see a benefit of dietary patterns in decreasing the likelihood of developing these endpoints. So aside from the PATHWAY study, there have been a few other studies in recent years that have published on dietary patterns and outcomes. These are four of them that were published recently. And if you look at the hazard ratio across these, without really thinking about what the specific comparison is, but basically, high, high versus low concordance with the different dietary dietary patterns, all these hazard ratios in the top part above that solid line are below one, meaning higher concordance with these dietary patterns, less likelihood of developing whatever the outcome is. In this case, it's overall mortality. The last paper on the bottom, the hazard ratios are higher, but these are dietary patterns or indices that, in which higher sort of levels of insulin load or glycemic load should be, in theory, associated with poorer outcomes. And so everything's consistent across all of these four studies that have recently been published. And this breast cancer specific mortality, one of the studies did not look at it. But again, generally speaking, better concordance with more healthful dietary patterns, better the outcomes. So switching to alcohol here, some of the standard breast cancer risk factors, alcohol is one of them. So like with diet, does alcohol intake after outcomes affect a breast cancer diagnosis? It's well-established as a breast cancer risk factor for developing breast cancer. And so we looked at this as well in the Pathways Study. And so the question is, okay, does alcohol intake after a diagnosis of breast cancer influence outcomes? And, and basically, here's, here's the amount of alcohol that was reported. Now, generally speaking, alcoholic beverage intake or the amount of alcohol is pretty low in our population, breast cancers, survivors in the Pathways Study. And as you can see, you know, it's sort of categorizing people into these three categories, non-drinkers, occasional, and regular drinkers. We see that, you know, even people who drink a lot, you know, are in the regular drinker category, there's still only three and a half drinks per week, generally speaking, an alcoholic beverage drink per week. And in terms of grams per day, around the time of diagnosis, the mean alcohol intake among the drinkers is only about a beverage, you know, a drink per day. So, so these are pretty, pretty low consumption overall. So that may partly influence the ability, our ability to be able to actually see associations. And basically, looking at these various endpoints, we don't really see much of a relationship between the amount of alcohol people are reporting that they've consumed and the risk of a recurrence, overall mortality, breast cancer specific mortality, or cardiovascular disease mortality. So not too much of an association. As with dietary patterns, there has, have been other studies that have looked at this question. This is a systematic review that was published, actually, a few years ago now, in 2016, looking at alcohol related to breast cancer recurrence and primary breast cancer. I won't go into the details. Basically, the conclusion is that there's some evidence alcohol consumption might increase the risk of breast cancer recurrence, specifically in post-menopausal women. But the association between alcohol and second primaries and overall other outcomes is less clear, and, and the findings are inconsistent. So our findings basically align with those, and that it's unclear whether there's an association with alcohol intake of outcomes after breast cancer. So getting back to this report from the World Cancer Research Fund and AICR, they did make some statements based on the literature, based on their review. So physical activity, they, as Ricky summarized, basically, increasing physical activity improves health-related quality of life and outcomes for people with breast cancer. So people should be physically active, so that's, that's a key. They did talk about dietary fiber as well, which I didn't directly address, but more healthful dietary pattern will be associated with higher consumption of dietary fiber. And people who eat more dietary fiber, from the studies that have looked at it, have better health outcomes after a diagnosis of breast cancer, whether it's specifically due to fiber or some other part of the dietary patterns that are associated with that or whatever. In any case, it seems like that's something to consider. Soy foods, there's, there are a handful of studies now that are considered to be pretty good quality. And they do state that the evidence doesn't necessarily support that one should increase soy foods if you don't eat soy foods. But if you do eat soy foods, there's no reason to decrease or stop eating soy foods. And if soy alternatives to dairy are consumed, it's preferred that they may, they may be fortified with certain nutrients that may be low in the soy products in and of themselves. So, so that's what they said. And then they also, you know, well, body weight, those with body weight in the healthy range, you know, have the best health outcomes, generally speaking. It's not clear whether deliberate weight loss by people who are overweight or obese improves outcomes at this point, but, but if you're basically avoid gaining weight if there's any reason to not to. So more generally, they recommend that, given sort of the general sort of lack of evidence in most areas, although growing evidence specifically in some of these areas, including dietary patterns, that people should recommend, should follow their general cancer prevention guidelines if you're otherwise healthful, healthy. And so getting back to that report, here's basically what their cancer prevention guidelines are. Be a healthy weight, be physically active, eat a diet rich in whole grains, vegetables, fruit, and beans, limit consumption of fast foods and other processed foods, high in fats, starches, or sugars, limit consumption of red and processed meat, limit consumption of sugar-sweetened drinks, limit alcohol intake, don't use supplements for cancer prevention anyway, breastfeed if you're a mother and you can. And after a cancer diagnosis, follow our recommendations if you can. So each of these statements have enough evidence that the WCRF and American Institute for Cancer Research feel confident about making these recommendations, and they're, they've been relatively consistent in their previous reports as well. So basically, there's a lot of evidence that dietary patterns can influence risk of overall mortality and outcomes after breast cancer. The evidence is growing, let's put it that way. And consistent findings with healthful dietary patterns and overall mortality. Breast cancer specific mortality, outcomes less clear. Alcohol intake, not quite so clear, maybe influences breast cancer recurrence. Overall mortality may in part be due to the effects on cardiovascular disease, which is one of the major outcomes for women with breast cancer and in the general population, of course. So I, overall, I'd say overall dietary patterns do make a difference. Specific foods or food groups may also be important, but the evidence for any of those is less than the dietary patterns, per se. So thanks. I don't know how much time we'll have for questions overall, but in any case, there's my email address. And had to throw in rock and roll because that's in the title of this session. So, anyway.
We are really running out of time, so let's hear from our patient advocate, Tamika Bryant,
All right, everybody, there's no slide. I'm gonna keep this brief because I'm sure you guys are probably tired and ready to go. Now, I'm certain many of you came to this because you read the title and you thought, drugs, sex, and rock and roll, I'm there. It is definitely time to shake up this breast cancer discussion. It's well-needed, and I hope you got some great things from it. So I don't have a lot of time, so let's break this down according to the title. Sex. A cancer diagnosis does not just affect our bodies. It transforms our relationships, including our intimate connections with ourselves and others. Sexuality after cancer is often an unspoken journey, but one that deserves to be acknowledged and supported. Cancer treatment can fundamentally alter how we experience intimacy. The physical changes, whether from surgery, chemotherapy, or radiation, are often visible and immediate. But the emotional impact runs deeper, shifts in body image, self-confidence, and even our sense of identity can create invisible barriers for intimacy. Cancer is definitely a social disease, and we acknowledge that healing happens not in isolation, but through connection. What's lost through cancer can indeed be found, sometimes in unexpected ways. This journey may lead to a different but equally meaningful experience of sexuality, one that honors both your survivorship and your continuing story of growth. So I encourage you to get frisky, have fun, and yes, try that cowgirl position. Drugs, guys, drugs. There is no miracle cure, and I'm sure you've all received DMs telling you that there is. And sometimes I think our minds want to trick us and tell us that there isn't. There's not one. I am, however, a fan of holistic treatments, as I absolutely believe a healthy body, key word, healthy body, can heal itself. But it is so important that we realize that natural does not always mean safe. So informed decisions make a difference, and it all starts with trust, trusting your medical team and having open communication. Partner with them and talk about what your wellness goals are and explore your options. Rock and roll. I know y'all thought we were going to come up here with some music. In fact, I was looking forward to some music and dancing. We'll save that for later. But the rock and roll is literally everything else. It's the nutrition, the exercise, et cetera. And so research is showing us, it is clear movement matters, and it's never too late to start. Hearing those words, "You have cancer," definitely brings on all sorts of emotions, and we have a hard time often unpacking. But it is amazing how simple a stroll in our neighborhood can help you find some clarity. The evidence is there, and I am a witness that you don't always have to hit the mark, but every movement counts. Think, move more and sit less. Focus on progress and not just progression. I meant not perfection, sorry. Nutrition. We all know that we have to eat, so let's do the steps to try to eat right. Where the issue comes in is we have a lack of consistent, evidence-based recommendations on diet, exercise, and supplements, and it adds to unnecessary anxiety when we're already facing a challenging time. While individual cancer journeys differ, we desperately need a unified voice from the medical community that will provide clear, actionable guidelines based on current research, exercise, or any other recommendations that account for treatment, side effects, and varying energy levels, evidence-based guidance that considers potential interactions with treatment. Most importantly, we need this interact, this information delivered with compassion, acknowledging that lifestyle changes should support, not burden, patients during treatment. The focus should be on sustainable, personalized approaches that enhance the quality of life rather than rigorous rules that increase stress. In closing, I just want to say that this is why we have to continue to advocate for better research and clearer guidelines while remembering that healing looks different for everyone. Your worth is not measured by your ability to follow perfect rules during treatment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bryant. That was a perfect way to round out the end of the session. We've, out of time, we've got like one minute if anybody has anything essential to say. I really want to thank all of the speakers and the audience, participants, and the discussions were great. So thanks so much, and enjoy the rest of the meeting.